Six oh one, I'd like to call the uh the March eighteenth twenty twenty four Eastland Board of Ed regular meeting to order. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance for those of you concerned. The order of business is public comment. Is there any public comment? Public comment. Okay, here none will close public comment and we move on to our purple minutes. We have the March four regular meeting minutes to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March four.
A second.
Uh any comments or changes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion.
I was not here.
Okay, I I saw, I wasn't sure if that was an upset, so Kate abstains.
It looked good, I wrote on it, it looked good, so.
Okay. Moving on, so we now, uh next section is special recognition, and this is something that we've been talking about as a board and for a while is, we wanna. There's some great things that are happening in our schools and we wanna, we wanna see them at the Board of Ed and recognize. These students and who have done phenomenal things and and we have a great opportunity that we have. Three uh different recognitions today and and I think we're all looking forward to hearing and seeing that the the great accomplishments that we have and. The first one, we have. The Poetry Out Loud State Final Champion winner, Emma Frisbee.
Welcome to the news, Emma.
Yeah.
Um so a few years ago, we started a Poetry Out Loud program at the high school. Is this your first time entering?
Yeah.
Emma's first time entering. She competed at the local level, so she won our building and then she won at the state level. And she goes on to the national championship in Washington DC, April thirtieth to May second. Emma is prepared to um uh read to recite a poem. This one of them you did at the state?
Yes, this is the one I did in the last round, which I think, which is my favorite and resonates most with me and really secured my win, I believe. Um, it is called Truth Is I Would Like To Escape Myself and is written by Nora Algarve. Truth is, I would like to escape myself. Detach my body from my skin, peel it layer by layer to uncover beneath the surface of petals. And thorns piled up year after year, who I am and who I want to be. I want to be the flower that grows in the dirt. The feather that flies free between the cracks of fences. A wise woman once told me, don't worry about you, worry about who you could be. I want to be the woman who sits on a desk. And writes pieces of oceans, rivers on a white space in a place where imagination has no border.
That was phenomenal. Let me ask you a question?
Yeah, I didn't know if I was supposed to sit down or not.
I have a question, maybe I'll start it and and just, so when did you start? Getting into the poetry and how did you do that and how did you kind of get to this point?
Um, so I am a professional public speaker and actor. Um, I'm a very creative person, so I um took creative writing my first semester at Eastline High School. And from there, I learned about poetry out loud and I entered kind of on a whim because I thought it aligned with. Most of what I like to do, I love to write, but I also like to perform. Um. So I entered the competition on a whim, totally not expecting for it to go anywhere, and it did, and I'm really happy of where it went.
The national competition, yes.
It's representing Connecticut and Eastline High School.
That's the one, let us know how it goes then. Oh, oh, yeah.
So that was fantastic and. I can only, you know, you you took somebody else's words and and translated them in in such a beautiful way. Have you thought about writing your own poetry?
Yeah, that was my goal of taking um creative writing. So I do write my own poetry um as well. It's definitely. Harder to recite somebody else's words because you're trying to interpret what they wrote in that moment, but. I do like performing my own poetry as well. And at the national competition, we actually have an opportunity just for fun to do like slam poetry and perform our own. Which I'm really looking forward to, I think that would be.
Shifting gears and next up, we have Tom Matlock, who you probably have read about in the newspaper or on social media. Um he's our shot put. Title winner. I think he won the state open with a throw of sixty-one in feet, eight inches to win by seven feet. It's a long, that's a lot. And then winner of the New England Shot Put Championship with a throw of sixty-two feet. I don't know if Tom wants to tell us a little bit about.
Uh, I mean, I appreciate the recognition. Uh, all my thanks go out to Coach Riker, really, probably. Uh, it's really just uh hard work and dedication, I guess, so. And getting good grades. Can't can't do that without that.
And we thought a demonstration might not be a good idea.
We we've been reading, I mean, it's hard not to read about you, whether pay pay a paper or social media and we wanted to, it's like, here's this. Student who's doing these amazing things and winning by. Enormous lengths and everything, so we did, what can you just, when did you get into throwing and you just shot put or did you throw? Discuss anything else or?
Who shot weight disc hammer and that's it. I've started throwing when I was about uh eight or nine. I did the youth track. And I got into it, that's how I got into it.
So you. We have a, at Eastline, we have a.
No, I started uh like separately, I used to go to a track club down in New Haven.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you see yourself in the years ahead? What do you think?
Uh, uh, I want, I want to go to college for it, I watch schools right now, so that's my main goal.
Olympics, maybe, you know? Be big.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Best of luck.
Last but not least, um we have Mr. Cottson here with the science bowl team. Mr. Cottson over there. Um, I can let them introduce themselves if you would like. They competed in April and went through the entire competition undefeated, securing the title of Connecticut Regional Champions for the third year in a row. They'll be invited back to Washington DC to compete in the national finals again this year. I just want to come up and go. Introduce yourself.
Uh, my name is Afni Cabra.
Uh, I'm Ming Wen. I'm the cap.
I'm Albert.
I'm Eric.
I'm Jari.
And I'm Kim Cottson, I'm the coach. Um, and I guess I could. Uh, spread a narrative for this. There, these kids have been fantastic. If you actually get a chance, you can go online, they don't let any parents or anybody tape any of this stuff. But there are some tapes of the competition sort of in the final phase. You have to watch it. It'll blow your mind. It is crazy challenging. And these guys were phenomenal. And what I want to advertise more than just their talent at the competition, which is exceptional. We we finished last year reasonably, we're in the top sixteen and then it all jumbles up, everybody competes. We're reasonably, we're in the top ten. We beat the number three team along the way. So really, really, really good team. This last Yu- Yukon competition, we played against last year's champions.
Yeah.
Uh Lexington and Lexington, Massachusetts, because there was an overlap, they did both competitions together at Yukon. It's the same team that won last year, the Nationals, and these guys beat them like beat them good. It was a crazy moment. The other team just. Lost control and didn't perform well and you guys crushed them. So very proud and you should all be very proud of the way they behave in these situations. I mean, literally, I've seen four or five times now where they corrected the judges and said, hey, listen, the other team. Needs more points in that situation. That's really exceptional. If you if you consider who competes at these things, these kids are really edgy. It's a really tough competition and these guys are the kindest, most relaxed group that you could imagine. So very proud.
Let's get a couple, three quick pictures. Those are the true quick. How's that? So why don't you all come on up here, up front, at least come on up.
Yeah.
Picture first here. And uh, Jamie, get your phone out. I think it's quick.
Which way we face?
Jamie, right there.
Just do that and that'd be.
Yeah, we're gonna use that for now. We're getting a backdrop, actually.
I spent five days in Washington with almost the same kids last year and actually loved them more after I been with them for five days.
All right, you're good.
Awesome. Okay, Tom, come on up. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Congrats.
Uh, thanks.
Thank you, everything.
How you doing, all right? Excellent, good.
Oh geez, I feel really little. Warm my heels today.
Awesome, thanks. Good luck. All right.
Uh, yes, this is a better match.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And I'm saying we're developing a backdrop to put over against that wall eight foot by eight foot so we can get pictures. Okay, yeah. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Question.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I'm just wondering what the topic was for the science bowl and.
Oh, sorry.
Watch the video.
It's kind of um like all around science, like biology, chemistry, and like everything related. So it's just like science in general.
So they had kind of like um a spelling bee or something like that, but science topics, and they had to be able to answer all the questions that came up. Oh, wow, interesting.
From what I understand, it's just the whole gamut. They have to have broad base, science-based knowledge, just if they can pull questions from all over.
Often do they get together to practice?
Yeah. And how do they practice? I wonder, like, is there something?
Do you know, that is often issue with probably men.
Do they study individually or as a group?
I mean, I know like that is a club in itself, so they probably schedule their own times to practice. Uh, I'm not exactly sure.
Nice. Yeah, so congratulations again. Thank you, that's amazing.
And what also was really neat about those, the diversity of topics that, you know, so if there's students who have interests, different interests, you can excel. At East, in Eastline and progress in whatever your area of interest and and expertise is and that's. I really shook it today, you know, you look at the diverse of diversity of the areas that people are focused in, just amazing. So that was really good.
I have one more question. Is it like what we used to see on public TV, the college bowl, that all four of them, does anyone remember that?
I remember that.
So is it like?
You definitely don't remember me. That's not, that sucks, yeah.
There were four people in a line and then whoever, they'd all work together to answer the question. So they can work together to answer the question.
I think so.
Okay, just curious. Thank you, I appreciate you, Eric.
Thanks. Um, so it was great and I think we should continue to do that. One for you all. So we have um special reports and we have our middle school students here today. We have Sophia and Sadie.
Okay, so the drama club performed Legally Blonde Junior on January twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. There was a great turnout. Um, a lot of. Uh, students went with friends and it was really great to see your peers before. The eighth grade volleyball tournament took place on Wednesday, January thirty first. Uh, eighth grade gym classes competed in a tournament and the winning team competed against a team of staff. Eighth graders got to watch the match against students and staff members and the staff ended up winning twenty-six to nineteen. The PTA also sponsored a sports-themed dance for all grades on Friday, February fourth. Um, on February tenth, Eastline Middle School sent three teams to the regional national science bowl competition at Smith Middle School in Glastonbury, Connecticut. Team one had four wins and one loss. Team two placed first and was named wildcard champion. Eastline received the sportsmanship award, which was voted on by participating teams. Leaders Club students went to the incoming parent and guardian night um and gave tours on March thirteenth. Um, I'm part of this club, so I was able to help out the parents and give tours and talk a little bit about my experience going into middle school.
Starting off with the boys and girls basketball team, both teams had an overall great season with many exciting games. The boys team finished their season with success after beating Isaac Middle School in a close and thrilling game. Moving into the second round of playoffs, they unfortunately lost to Legend Middle School, ending their season. The girls team ended their regular season with a seven and three record and both and beat both teachers Memorial and Benny Dover Middle School to make their way into the finals against Ledger. Unfortunately, we lost a heartbreaker in the finals, but overall finished our season feeling successful. To celebrate our season, the girls team now plans to have a pizza and dessert, pizza and desserts at Family Pizza in downtown Nantucket. Additionally, the Board of Ed has now put soccer cheerleading and volleyball into our works, so soccer will start up again in the fall and volleyball will be a spring activity. Last year, Mr. Brano attended our school to promote anti-bullying by painting famous individuals who faced bullying and discrimination while upside down. To show, to show our, to so, sorry, to show our gratitude for his painting, he gave us. The life arts, the life arts teachers of our school made a frame to go around the painting. The painting now hangs in our foyer. The PTA has sponsored a spirit week for Elm students to participate in during the week of February twelfth. Monday was comfy clothes day. Tuesday, we didn't have school due to a snow day. Wednesday, we wore pink and red for Valentine's Day. Thursday, we showed our support for our favorite sports team by wearing a jersey. And Friday, we showed our Elm spirit. On March twenty-fifth, our middle school is going to be holding an assembly about growth mindset and bullying and why it is not okay through BMX racing. The assemblies will be split into two during the day, one of which will be fifth and sixth graders attending and the other will be seventh and eighth grade. To celebrate our near end of the year, the middle school has put a quasi amusement park field trip into the works. The school has rented out the park for the day in Middlebury, in Middlebury, so the students will have all, so students will have access to all the rides to themselves. The field trip is expected to be on May seventeenth. Students ranging from seventh and eighth grade will have the opportunity to ride on whichever ride they want to throughout the day. They will also be able to eat any food item from the menu at any time between eleven-thirty and one-thirty for free. While there, students will be required to work on a packet that relates to the forces in motion on different rides that. That they are currently learning in their science classroom. Students will take observations on different rides and apply them to graphs and questions in their packet. On the morning of the trip, students will leave the school at seven-thirty AM and return back at three-thirty PM. To add on the end of the year of. To add on to the end of the year celebrations, the eighth grade class day will be attended at Bradbrook, where students end the year on a positive note while having fun with peers. On February second, the rising eighth grade night at the high school card. Um, my experience, it started off in the auditorium where the principals, administrators, and counselors introduced themselves. They then went on to talk to us about what the classes are going to be like, the credits required to graduate, the after-school activities, the schedule, and more.
Um, yeah, I think this was a really great opportunity for eighth graders to learn more about the high school, and I think it will definitely help ease the transition um to high school. Um, our grade, we were during the pandemic, we were fourth and fifth grade at like the prime point, so we didn't have. Um, as much of a easy transition as teachers would have hoped, so I definitely think these types of events will help us um smoothly transition into high school.
I liked that I got my information from the student's perspective and not that the staff wasn't helpful, but um I felt like I could relate more and know what school would be like for me better through the student's point of view. That's it.
I have a couple of questions. Anybody have a question?
I was gonna say, thank you. Last week, we did the middle school tour for fourth grade parents. Esteban and I were in the same group and you guys did a great job. It was nice to see the school and also hear from the students. That's great.
I I had a couple of questions. So one, um we mentioned in the beginning about middle school sports that we we did agree and we're gonna add. Is there any talk at this middle school of excitement about that? Is it?
Well, I know.
Are you hearing?
In the younger grades, but like my brother's grade, there's a bunch of people that are excited for the soccer team. That's really, that's really all I know.
I haven't heard too much, but I'm sure um it will start to. I feel like kids haven't heard that much about it, but if um. Maybe the morning news can talk about it a little bit, and I definitely think that will help grab kids' attentions.
Yeah, also a lot of students in our school like volleyball and I think it would be fun for them to, because I'm pretty sure a lot of people did the interview about um volleyball. So I think a lot of people do this volleyball.
Eric, and I'm gonna give you a little bit of an update when I do a report out on where things stand with the assistant athletic director position and next steps.
Okay, excellent. And uh, one other question on the, I forget what you called it, but the day where you come to the high school and kind of. Is there anything that additional that you would think if you had some, hey, it would also be nice if we did. Something or got to see or that would help future students. And if you can't think of anything now and you think of something later, you can tell um Ms. Kelly or something, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can think of anything now. I think the high schoolers did a great job of talking to us and showing us around, and I think the counselors. Um, gave us a lot of the information that we need. Um. But I, if I, if we think of anything, we'll definitely contact you guys.
Yeah, and if you talk to any of your classmates and stuff, it's all, you know, we're, we want to keep improving, right? So it's, it's as you go through it and you say, hey, that was. Oh, you know, that was really good, but you know, if we could do this, that would, so if you see anything, you know, please, listen.
Yeah, I think, I I think I got everything that I wanted to know. And I also forgot to mention that afterwards, when we got to view like the after-school activities, I got to like talk with like. The basketball captains and the soccer captains, so I think it would like, it really helped me like now going into high school, knowing that like I already know a few of them.
Yeah.
So that I, I can make a good first impression.
Right.
Could I add just one little snippet to that? Um, we worked with Deb Kelly and the high school administration and the counselors and um. Couple of weeks prior to the Rising Viking Evening, the counselors put together a short video, which gave a lot of information. We did run that on the air, so that was a new addition to the eight to nine transition this year. Um, and it, I think we sent a lot of communication through our newsletter, through Infiniti Campus, and it had a lot of information with regards to program studies. Um, kind of what to expect. So we really tried to bolster that communication and um, you know, we're continuing to try to enhance and and sit down and reflect certainly feedback from our students. Um, but to continue to grow and expand that um, that opportunity.
And this year we added, when they were done with the presentation and the tour, they had an opportunity to talk to clubs, organizations, sports, and the CILs for each of the departments if they had questions about any of the classes.
That was neat. You know, set up in tables out here in the uh, in the, in the comments. It worked out well.
And I can share the feedback that I've heard from the kids. That was a newer piece too, that really stood out for them and I think it really drove home. Um, you know, kind of the the incoming piece of being a freshman and being in high school and what it means to be a Viking with regards to some of the opportunities and different people they had to talk to, so.
It was awesome. The CIL, Deb?
Uh, the heads of the departments, not department.
Curriculum instructional leaders.
Thank you.
Good question. I know acronyms. There's a lot of them.
Thank you. Um, moving on, we now have our high school student representatives. We have Magira and Daylen.
So, first thing is seniors just ordered their extra caps for graduation that were able to decorate. Um, Senate was a little bit last minute on getting the forms out for that, but I know that a lot of students signed up and ordered the caps and we're all really excited for that. Um, spring applications for career concentrations are open and they're due in April. And as far as I've heard, like. A lot of my friends applied in the fall and they got theirs, but those who are taking classes that need, that are needed to complete their concentrations are. Um, working on the applications right now. Um, March sixth, students were allowed to register to vote if they're eighteen by election day, and I know a lot of students took that opportunity during advisory and it was very helpful. Because I know a lot of students don't really know how to go about that, so I think that was a really good thing. Um, March fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, the Spring Musical took place in the auditorium, which was the twenty-fifth annual Putnam Spelling Bee. I wasn't able to go unfortunately, but all my friends who went said that it was really fun and they really enjoyed going. And that the interactive piece in the audience was really like interesting and like something kind of new and different. Um, parent teacher conferences are March eighteenth and nineteenth, so those are half-days. The PSAT and SAT is a testing day for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors on March twenty-seventh. Senior prom is May twenty-fifth at the Mystic Marriott, and right now Senate is getting together the decorations. Last year, the twenty-twenty-three Senate had um like some twenty, like a senior sign, I think, in their ballroom, so we're working on getting that too. Tickets are forty dollars but can be purchased in a package for seventy-five dollars if you buy the senior trip permission slip early ticket with that. Which is to the Connecticut Sports Box, and if you don't buy it in the package, it's sixty dollars, so I know a lot of students are gonna take up on that deal. Underclassmen just finished choosing courses for next year and I've heard a lot about them deciding, and I know the counselors have been really helpful with that. Senate just had their blood drive and there was a good turnout for donations. It was a little bit difficult to get people to sign up this year for some reason, but. I know the full Senate went around during lunch and kind of asked people at their tables to sign up, so that was good. Um, Senate is also working on selecting their Senate for next year and elections are going to be held later in the spring. On April thirtieth, there's a college club fair in Southern Connecticut, and that's been advertised in the newsletter a couple of times. Um, Avni Cabra, who was just here, I'm sorry we couldn't mention her when she was here, but she was a winner of the Coca-Cola Scholarship for twenty thousand dollars, which is really amazing, and she was one of. I think a thousand finalists, which is really nice. Um, the varsity and junior varsity cheer team won first place at their most recent competition and their coach Hannah Taylor won ECC Coach of the Year. And last thing for me is spring sports are about to begin, so students are excited for that. And I know a lot of them have already begun, so I know students are really busy with that, especially seniors who have all their events coming up.
Um, Spanish Honor Society is hosting what is probably their last fundraiser through the year, um which is Munson's Chocolate. Um, they're trying to advertise that a lot and get a lot of people to support it. The hypnosis show is Saturday, March twentieth at seven PM and tickets are gonna be sold for fifteen bucks. Um, students are super excited for this because we've always seen a lot of people come to the show and it's always a good turnout and they get to participate in it, so seniors are excited for that. Um, purchase forms for graduation yard signs are available in the newsletter for parents in graduating seniors. The Eastland Scholarship Association has opened up their application, so seniors are working with that to submit by the deadline of March twenty-nine. Emma Frisbee, who is just here, Poetry Out Loud. Um. Senior Senate is hosting a Zumba fundraiser on April fifth from six to eight. March sixth is, oh yeah, she said this, but I was talking to the lady who was running the whole thing. And she emailed me, she said, we rate, we got enough blood to save a hundred forty-two lives. And also, in August, on the ninth, I believe, um, we're gonna do another blood drive here from twelve to five, five-thirtieth. And me and another junior are gonna help run that.
August ninth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um. NHS applications have begun and people are getting really excited for that, but nervous at the same time because. It's, you have to submit a form and then there's a second round and then that's the group. So they weed people out by like thirds. Um, juniors have had their college meetings with the counselors. A lot of people are getting stressed about it, especially the juniors, because this is their last semester to get their grades as high as they can before um. They submit their GPA to colleges and they're hearing some hard truths about the colleges they may or may not get into, so. Yes, that's fine.
I have a few questions. What was, when are the in-school SAT, we still do that, right?
Yeah.
End of March?
February seventeenth.
Okay. And then, oh, the, the life saved, the blood drive, can we get that on our, post it on our Instagram or something like that? Would that be something like that, what we're doing and? I don't know which Instagram we can, but.
Yeah, newsletters.
Something that's on social media, so we're doing.
Just throw in another number, they registered eighty-five seniors to vote. Hall was through.
Yeah. Like a third of the class, basically, right? And some probably aren't even of age yet, yeah, aren't old enough yet, yeah.
They were really interested in it.
Daylen, will you email me the flyer for the blood drive?
Yes.
Posted on, I will.
Oh yeah, I know normally this time of year, we also hear a lot about AP tests. Are those on the horizon as well, dare I ask?
So those are gonna be in mid-May like they usually are. And I know, I remember when I was a junior, it was more stressful because those ones matter more, I guess. But I know the seniors are still nervous because senioritis, I don't know if you all have heard of that. A lot of seniors have gotten into colleges, so their effort has been a little lower. So we're kind of nervous about our AP tests, but also like not at the same time because we already have decisions. It's there.
Juniors are very nervous, just because, especially with the semester and especially with the counselor meetings, I've been hearing a lot of people saying, I don't know what I'm gonna do about my GPA and they're just saying, I'm gonna have to lock in this semester. And especially with the people that have spring sports, because I know the spring sports are like more popular than the winter sports. Like I know track and crew takes up a lot of time. It's just a lot to juggle right now for the juniors. And then the AP testing, I know some people have like two or three tests and I've heard someone has like three tests that are consecutive, three days in a row, so. We'll see how that goes.
Alright, so you mentioned the NHS applications and students are a little bit anxious. Can you kind of expand? What are they anxious about?
Yeah, so I'm actually president of National Honor Society, so I know like a lot about the application process. So what Daylen was talking about is the application is pretty extensive. So first, they add all the students to Google Classroom based on GPA. I believe it's three point six. And then after that, you're eligible to apply. And I know a lot of students don't apply because it's kind of a long application. But it's like a chart and you have to report clubs or organizations you're a part of that show your character, leadership, and volunteer like characteristics. And on top of that, you have to contact like advisors or people who can like speak on your behalf for those things. So you have to get them to respond to this Google form. And I think you need two per category. So a lot of the issue for that is just like meeting the deadline because a lot of the speakers like don't respond in time or it just doesn't go through. But Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Chair are really good about like communication with that. There's two rounds of applications, so there's one in the fall. And you can apply in the spring again if you don't get in the first time. So I usually tell like people to apply the first time because if you don't get in the first time, Mr. Hernandez will tell you what about your application didn't get you in, which is really helpful. And like another scary thing is that the board of people who selects members for NHS, it changes every year, so you don't know who's looking at your application. So that's something that some students are worried about if they don't have that great of relationships with their teachers because they don't know who's gonna be judging their application.
Thank you for kind of the detailed explanation. I was aware that it is a competitive process and it's, it's an involved process, but I didn't know the, all the details that, that go into it. And I, and the thing that I'd like to mention is that I think our school does a great job at selecting really deserving kids in the National Honor Society. And I, and again, this is anecdotal evidence, but I've heard that other schools are a little bit more relaxed about NHS. So that's why I was a little bit curious as to why, why kids are getting anxious. But that being said, I think our school maintains a higher, you know, higher, you know, threshold for getting into National Society. And I, you know, yeah, I don't know if I can maybe make a suggestion to you, but that, that is an important thing to, to put out there. That when, when, when somebody from our school says that they are member of the NHS, they have earned it. It's not, it's not just because they had, just, just had a GPA. There's a lot of stuff that goes into it. That's, that's a big deal. So I, you know, and I don't know how colleges review and perceive NHS, but I think we have to make sure that this information is out there when, when we write our recommendations for students who are, especially who are members of NHS, that we highlight the fact that, you know, getting into NHS is, is actually a big deal for, for our school system. So just, just something that maybe we can keep, keep in mind because this is a very involved process, which I was not aware. So thank you for it.
I could say, that's a great point because there are a lot of schools that is just strictly GPA. If you have a three-six, you're in. If you don't have a three-six, you're not in. Like, and that's it. And there's no, but in Eastlime, I remember the stress for my kids of going through that process. It is tough. Now, I will say it does help when they're doing their college applications because a lot of what you're writing up, you end up needing for your essays and all the other forms. So it does actually get you to start thinking about it, but it is a rigorous process and it isn't, it is, it's an, it's great if you have a three-six or above anyway, but it is a real honor to be in the NHS. It is such a good day.
Now that we're just bringing up the rigor of the school, I thought I'd share something about the colleges. I've been hearing that a lot of people, like a lot of the athletes, they're talking to recruiters. And at least from what I've experienced, when I was talking to mine, he was asking about my GPA and I told him it. And then he was like, where are you from? He's like, oh, you're from Eastlime, right? And then I said, yeah. And he's like, oh, that's a different story. And a bunch of, I think, from what I've heard from other people as well, is colleges know and other schools know that Eastlime holds their students to a much higher standard and the rigor of the classes is a lot higher. And I think that really helps with people's chances of getting into college. Because even when I was talking to my counselor, she was saying, I, I had a kid from my last school who I did not think would get into this school. And then I had a kid here who had, they were pretty much the same person and he got into that school and the last person didn't, so. Yeah.
What percentage do we have that is National Honor Society for our, our kids who apply or how many?
So there's not a set number.
What do we have statistically in our school?
Um, right now, I think it's about thirty students, the senior class, and it's gonna be more at the end of the year when the juniors are adopted.
Okay, so two hundred and ten?
Just over ten percent. So we're like two fifty, thirty, so.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Four of you, thank you. Have a good night, yes. Moving on, we started our discussion action items and we have Claudia and Kelly giving us the Elms Principal Report.
Hello, everybody tonight. Just to give you some updates, we have some, we were able to, in the fall, we had met with a representative from Electric Boat. They have started working with the high school and are due to start working with some support programs for the elementary schools. So we have been able to secure one of our faculty who has agreed to participate in the C-Purge program. That's at the middle school level, what it's called. So our teacher will be trained and we'll be able to start the EP program beginning in the fall of twenty twenty-four. And from what has been conveyed to us, it will be comprised mainly of grade eight students, approximately twelve of them, and they will participate in twelve one-hour sessions. So that's really exciting that we're able to partner because we, you know, we obviously want to be part of that where we have the elementary kids that are being exposed in the high school. So I'm super excited that we have that to, to look forward to. We've also started a number of new clubs this year. And currently, we have approximately twenty-seven after-school clubs running for this twenty-three, twenty-four year. Some of the clubs have been generated by student interest and one such example is we had a student that approached us and approached a faculty member to begin the Dungeons and Dragons Club. We had a teacher that has his own passion of guitar and wanted to extend kind of that STEM experience. So he has ordered, first of all, explaining, playing guitar, and then having the kids, his hope is to eventually build a guitar. So he has some kits that have been donated. And he is one of our tech ed teachers. So that is new. And we also have Triumph, which mirrors what the high school has for the choral. It's kind of like the honors choral aspect. So we're really excited about that. What I thought I would do is share this with you and this shows you, this is a sheet of all of our after-school clubs and activities for the year when they run. So it gives you a really good overview of some of the variety and the different clubs that we do offer and our students participate in. Can I send it this way? So that is exciting and that continues to grow and expand. You know, as you heard from students that presented, we did have kids that were in the Connecticut Science Bowl that participated. We had our group that recently participated in the Mask House as well. So that's really exciting. We also had our students that facilitated, we ran our grade four, incoming grade four parents for incoming fifth graders next year. Last night, let me try that again. Last week was our parent information night. Our students did a phenomenal job. They were gracious hosts. They did a superb job leading our parents through the building, answering questions. The feedback that we got as families left was outstanding. And we also received several really good emails back mending. And I know Jamie and Esteban were there as parents in the audience. So I was really proud of the, of the tour that the students did. And we really have some talented, amazing students. So that was really nice to see. We had a great turnout. So that is exciting. And, you know, that was one of many events that we have added are, are part of the transitionary process from grades four to five. The students will also be coming on May seventeenth with their teachers and their classes, and they'll be coming to spend the day with us. That is when our grade seven and eight students will be at the Quasi Park. So our incoming students for fifth grade will be spending the day with us. They'll do some icebreaker activities on teams with the next year's team of teachers. They'll also be spending the day, have lunch and be able to go outside to kind of experience the lunch rotation, some recess, and just to get to integrate and meet some of the students from the other incoming elementary schools. So that's really another great day that we're looking forward to. Let's see, our service leader, our service club continues to do a lot for the community. They've done coat drives, food drives. They recently collect the tops of like the soda, the pop tabs for weigh-ins. They've had a competition for that. That's for the Ronald McDonald House. So that there have been a lot of really, our students understanding the importance of not only character and integrity within the building, but giving back and helping within the community. So that's been outstanding. We've also done a lot of to help support DEI. We have done a lot of the cultural awareness presentations, have students talked about different religious practices, cultural heritage, family traditions. So we have really aired that on the morning news as well. We also have advertised and interviewed for our Assistant Athletic Director. So myself, Kevin Marku, and then one of our teachers in the building was on the committee. We did select an internal person, somebody that is an Eastlime Middle School staff member. Kevin and I did meet with that party, with that teacher last week. So our next focus is really honing in on the marketing piece. So we sat down and talked about different ways to deliver messages. There'll be, so that is in the works of being drafted. That will be disseminated to our grade four students so that they're aware and can really have something to think about. And this way, families and students can plan and prep. We're gonna share it on our social media page. The teacher will be at the PTA meeting. We have a PTA meeting this coming Thursday night, so that information will be shared at the PTA level. And we're gonna have them assist us with some of the advertising to get a broader span. The hope is also to be able to utilize signup genius, signup genius, so we can be able to grasp the level of interest. Once we have that, I know that Kevin has put forth looking to hiring for the coaches, especially for the fall, for boys and girls soccer, so that we can get that going, the uniform piece. So we are rapidly moving forward. Once that is secured and set, we will then look at then for the winter, the cheerleading, and then, you know, in the spring, the volleyball. I think the good news, as you heard our students share, is the intramural volleyball. We actually had to cap first time ever because there was so much student interest. We just couldn't house that many students with one, one adult. So I think I'm hoping, fingers crossed, that that continues to grow and that program will take off too. So I think it'll be exciting. We're gonna work really hard to market it and, you know, work for, for that to be a success.
When, additionally, when Kevin comes the next time to give a report, we'll have her, the individual that we've signed on as the assistant Athletic Director will join. We're gonna ask her to join Kevin, so.
We shared her name?
Oh, I didn't, do we make that public?
All over the social.
Yeah, yeah.
All over social media.
Yeah, Kathleen Kubalanka.
She will be fabulous. Yes.
She's.
She will be fabulous. She will be.
She's, she's excited.
She's exciting. Yeah, she, when she was a club coordinator, when she helped with some of, when, you know, when that position was incited for some of the clubs internally, she did help facilitate that. So she has a great skill set and I think she'll be a great asset. And, you know, will work with both Kevin and I to really continue to grow this program, so. And the kids are excited about it. So I think that that's the good thing. That's, that's what I'm hearing from the students.
Good question. Since we took a break on volleyball, is it co-ed or boys?
No, speaking with Kevin, it's gonna be girls. They will compete in some tournaments. It's kind of that in-between the winter and the spring session. So there will be some tournaments that they have, practice about twice a week. The thought is maybe to have some of the older high school students who are on the volleyball team kind of come down just to be able to build that bridge, especially, you know, getting the kids ready for the high school level. I know that sometimes Lauren Anis right now is the intramural volleyball facilitator. And some of those kids are coming down right now, so I think that'll only continue to grow and continue to further support the teams, both middle school and high school.
Thanks.
You bet.
Let me see what else I can share with you that the kids didn't. We continue to work with Linda Darcy for building our different DEI collaboration. We are actually due to have our third session, I mean, Friday. So we are looking to continue to expand and we have five members at the middle school of staff that are participating. They will also be sharing out a couple of them at our upcoming April second Eastlime Ed Camp. Just some, some of the information to disseminate so that staff can pick different sessions to rotate through that day. And we can share at a smaller scale what it is that are building bases to bring back the district goals. And then our hope is in August, continue to expand and grow that and to have a bigger cohort come in and participate so we can continue to carry out the work with that. So that is exciting. We are also looking to have Dr. DeCoven come back and work with some of our students. So unfortunately, he wasn't able. We're hoping to try to get him in before the end of the school year. But in counting calendar days, I can't believe we're at fifty-some odd already. So it's hard to try to get everything in. So that is our plan going forward. We're also looking at continuing to work. We had Victoria and the Cultural Awareness Club come on down and work with our eighth grade team upstairs on Big Blue. And it was really good collaborative session. I think you heard from our student reps, one of the greatest and most powerful tools, I think, is student to student. Sometimes as the adults, we can stand and talk and share, and sometimes it's not always as powerful and impactful, but it really resonates with the students. So we, Victoria will. But it really resonates with the students. So we, uh Victoria will actually be coming down to do the other grade eighteen, the welts. And we're gonna expand it um to the seventh grade students as well. So.
The top sort of our high school science teachers who's coming down.
Yep. That's exciting. We're really looking forward to that. And she does a great job facilitating that. And again, it's one more bridge. So that the kids can really make those connections, A with some of the staff members. And B have familiar faces when they transition up to the high school. That's exciting. Um, let's see. I think just, you know, continuing to work both with um the elementary schools for the grade four transition. And as well as with the high school to continually look at expanding and adding um to our transition. Um for our students as we're receiving them and as we are sending them to the high school, that is always the goal. And um you know, we're always open to feedback from both families as well as students and um. I think we do a good job, but there's always room to add and tweak. Um and just lastly, I will be at. Um Yukon tomorrow. It's the NEAG Education College Fair. So with some of our anticipated upcoming um. Uh openings for the upcoming school year, hoping to meet some strong, solid candidates. Um so I'm looking forward to that, hoping we can make some great connections and um start early. And continue to try to bring the best that we can in to keep Eastline moving in the direction that we want. So I'm hopeful tomorrow as well. Any questions?
Two questions. One, did you say that the the E B um connection was bringing sea perch to the middle school?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a teacher working with that?
Yes. It'll be one of our science teachers that has um stepped up and wanted to participate.
That's a very cool little program.
What is it?
It's a little R O V that the kids build. I do it with my intro class. It's a. Remote operated vehicle. It's a submersible submarine. It's a tethered submarine, P built with PVC. It's, they learn about. Um they're gonna learn about buoyancy, they're gonna learn about soldering, electronics and stuff. It's a cool little project.
Yeah, and it sounds like from what they're doing at the elementary level, you know, kicking it up to the next level. Um.
The kids are gonna love it.
It sounds like it. And I know that there was some talk about maybe trying to utilize the pool to check the submersible.
That's the way to.
Have that competition go, so.
That's gonna, that's gonna go over well. The other thing is, you neglected to mention that tonight is the. Middle school trivia, climate and culture thing going on, I believe.
Oh, that's right. Yes, we do have many.
From that to have this before today, but we could use you on one of the teams. Oh, it's district wide. Oh, okay.
I gotta go represent the middle. They could do, we did it last time. Yeah, we didn't win.
That's right. Kathleen's like, you have a board event meeting tonight. There's trivia tonight.
He does trivia?
Yes.
And so we do one district-wide at least one a year.
Like staff?
Yeah, okay.
All staff. Yeah, just us.
Yeah.
In the.
We missed it in the fall this year for some reason. It just got really noisy.
Yeah, we couldn't make it happen. The old column couldn't, we couldn't.
Fall and in the spring. Awesome. Yeah, and Bill, you remind me, we have um some of our middle school students on the um on the committee for the culture and climate as well. Um so I think that the student voice.
They've been great.
Yeah, they've been really very good. So, you know, I know that you're on it and you're heavily involved and as I'm looking up, I neglected to state that, but. They've been great. No, they've been great participants and.
You know, we'll do to the next trivia, I don't know if we'll do another one this year.
Bring the board?
I was gonna say, have a board team if they wanna, you wanna form a.
Something that the staff should do. I just think that they might feel weird having us there.
We're, we're, you're spread out enough, like, you know, it might be, we can talk, we can talk.
People might feel weird if we're there. I don't, I, you know what, I, I don't, I've been accustomed to be. Cause I have people who come up to me like, I really can't talk to you, you're a board member. And I'm like, really?
Never experienced it.
It does happen.
How well that worked with me that.
Yeah, we have to be careful.
About that. And I, this may be a way to dispel that fear. Human. Oh, yeah, I know, I know, just something.
Work in progress.
Which is crazy enough to decide.
The other, the other question.
Um I'm super excited here, but I don't, I don't want anybody to be uncomfortable. I was gonna ask about it, but you clarified that. That's super exciting. This list. Is great. Did the kids get a copy of this, like when they first?
So what we have done through, we met with the P T A in August. Uh Mr. Anderson and I met with our P T A in August and what they had asked, just again, for family planning purposes, is in advance. To post it through Infinite Campus so families and students could be aware. Um so when clubs are running, we have a board outside the cafeteria that has, that houses all the permission slips. And it will show all of the clubs that are running and we also communicate that. Stacy Anderson, um who's in the main office. Sends that through Infinite Campus for all our families as the new clubs are up and running. There's a, there's a lot of range of different things that are there. And I think the really kind of cool thing about it is if we have a student that comes to us. That really feels passionately about something and advocates and can find, you know, we work with them to find a teacher to help facilitate it. We try really hard to make it happen. Or if there's a club that doesn't have a lot of interest that particularly here, kind of be able to shift things around.
Thank you.
Jeff, real quick, can you tell someone that we're gonna, when they're gonna do the perch, you know, the sea perch dives at the pool?
I don't know.
I don't know, no, I need to know right now.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yep.
My understanding is they're gonna try to run the two sessions. So I would imagine towards the end of the twelfth session. Probably build it and then have that competition. But as we, as that happens and it starts unfolding, I'll be glad to show that out.
So Claudine, thank you for this presentation. You said that it's, what, more of the times for the after-school programs?
They typically run three to four. Most days, they run Monday, Tuesday or Thursday because that is when a late bus is available. So the permission slips that go out, the family has to indicate whether the students will be a pickup. They're walking to the, to the community center or they will be taking the late bus. So that this way, we can kind of keep tabs on where the students are even after school.
Okay, then I was wondering what G S A is, Dan Triumph?
Uh G S A is Gay Straight Alliance.
Okay.
And then Triumph is that mirrors um kind of what the high school has with regards to a coral, additional coral. Um one of the things that the Triumph facilitator, who is.
Singing?
Yeah, coral listen singing or um band uh in the music realm. Um I thought this was kind of cool. The kids wanted to do a little bit more. So we are looking to try to have a smaller band. Some of the kids in Triumph are other kids who want to participate. So we are hoping maybe for our boys and girls home basketball games to have almost like a student band section. Um so we're exploring that as an option too for the fall to really kind of get some of our climate culture and. Have been incorporating some of the art, you know, with some of our art clubs with maybe some posters or banners. So trying to continue to grow that too.
Yeah, I guess I lied. I have a third question too. When the, you go to the college fair tomorrow, are we still looking for diverse? Diversity in terms of hiring and looking?
Yep, yep. I was on the committee and helped write, so um absolutely. Um Mr. Anderson did a great, he showed me the final product right before I came today. It's a three trifold that really accentuates. Um and I can share it with Jeff to share with you. Um some of the highlights of things that Eastlime as a district is notorious for. Um so we have some of the district-wide banners that have all of the schools. We've also reached out to the other administrators in the building to see if they have a need as well. Um I know um Mrs. Shulman and I spoke last week. So she expressed, unfortunately, she can't make it tomorrow, but she did express the area of anticipated vacancy. So we have that listed on a sheet as well. So we're hoping to be able to bring back some information for her. So we continue to really network and work together collaboratively.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna be there for a period. I'll get some pictures, okay, too, to share.
So just want a a clarification and then maybe a question. I am, that's, that's all music.
Yes.
It's not just.
Not just coral, but there's, there's bands. So that's why we're trying to utilize that as a springboard for bringing some of our sporting events.
I am at middle school, kind of serve as the feeder for the triumph at high school.
Yes, and actually, our band, uh uh one of our band teachers came to us at the end of last year. That was something that's brand new this year. We did not have that and they have worked very closely with the music department here at the high school. So. And I know that some of the music staff from the high school has come down, um you know, especially for our grade eight students promoting the arts um here. So I think again, that continued um interface and collaboration has been huge.
That's, that's great because, you know, so like, I, I, I've heard about Triumph. My, my son was, when he was in high school here, he was a member of the Triumph. And the more talented kids do usually get, you know, get involved with Triumph and. You know, I attended one of their concerts and, and you know, when, when you look at, when you look at the school concerts, there, that's the group. When you, when you look at the Triumph concerts is where the individual gets to perform and means. There are not that many opportunities for kids at this age to kind of get that, that experience of the solo performance. Means. If, if we can figure out a way of advertising when these, these kids perform. Because they, I mean, they, I mean, they follow some kind of a different schedule. I do, I don't know exactly when they do that. But if, if that could be opened up to public, that would be great because you could hear their, their individual voices and their individual talents. So just, just, just a thought over here.
We're not there yet. We're growing towards it, but most definitely. So thank you. That's, that's a great thought.
Right, I could, Bill, because I was gonna bring it up when you were articulated, it would be a little better, but. You know, we have all these sporting events where we do a national anthem and then there's half times. And if there is opportunities to get our students, and it's not, probably not every national anthem, but. I do like when I go to sporting events and you have the student come up and do the national anthem and they're all amazing and. I wish I could sound a third as good as them or whatever, like I could never do that, but it's, it's really neat and it showcases. And then there's a halftime at, you know, all these events, they, you know. They vary, they're probably like ten minutes or something like that, but maybe, you know, you could get two or three minutes and they could perform or do something and showcase. To people, the broader, both at the high school and middle school.
Middle school, yeah. I know like when we have the Veterans Day Assembly, um we have our choir that, that sings. And then we have our um, you know, our band that does the national anthem on the instrument, um which they, you know, they do an amazing job with that too.
So my other uh question, are the fifth, do the fifth grade teachers, it's completely unrelated. Fifth grade teachers, are they the same each year or do the fifth grade teachers become? Do they stay as fifth grade?
They loop. So this year's current grade five teachers will be the students. The kids and the students will all move up. They will be the grade six teachers next year. So this year's current grade six teachers will be next year's grade five teachers. Same thing.
Question I was gonna have, which, well, is if the fifth grade teachers from last year are also fifth grade teachers this year. And with our curriculum change, I'd be curious is what they've noticed, but they're not, they're different.
They've also been part of the loop. They've also been part, you know, with regards to the discussion, um you know, with the different pilots that we've had. They have met with our literacy coach. They've also, I mean, we have people right now that are um delivering, you know, the, the pilots to the students. But they have planning time, common planning time that they do meet and they've been part of the discussions and they are familiarizing themselves. Themselves with materials because they will be the teachers next year that are teaching the materials.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
So our next topics or series of topics, discussion and action, finance facilities and community. So we have, um Chris is gonna come up and give um discussion information, a food service report. The next two items are discussion action, per certifications. Just so everyone knows, they would be in consent agenda. Um cause we do this, it's an annual um approval. But we, uh Chris actually needs a motion and uh serving us, that's why it's, it's on here. So. If you have questions, feel free to ask him. Otherwise, we have to kind of motion and approve those um.
And these are yearly. See for our two new board members though, this has been a yearly process. It's Jamie's favorite.
Same motion. Gets to read it.
And everybody has met Ashley week before, our, our assistant director, yes. Um, yeah, so we just came to give you a little update. Um what we doing? This is your slide, Joe, so.
You can go to the next slide if you'd like. Um, so a couple of highlights of what we've done since we met with you in the fall. Um we just got done earlier this month celebrating National School Breakfast Week, March fourth through the eighth. Um re- um iterating to the kids that breakfast remains free for them under um the stable funds that we've opted in for. Um so during that week, we had brunch for lunch, which is most of the kids' favorite anyways. Um at the high school, on the left, you can see we had kind of a spread of a fill-your-own breakfast. We made a couple of quiches, um. Pancakes, French toast, strawberries, good brew. And then the elementaries had options for alternatives for lunch all week, um breakfast for lunch all week. Um March is National Nutrition Month through the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. Um so we did some samples in the cafeteria. Um I did some butternut squash, mac and cheese and some sweet potato crisps. And the kids got um little things such as um fruit and vegetable bookmarks and fruit and vegetable um erasers. Um so they liked the little prizes and it was a good incentive for them.
If they tried it.
Try, yeah, if they tried.
Make sure they tried it. We're like, you can't take both and then lock it and dump one, so. Um and we're gonna, we did that at Flanders. We're gonna be doing the other two schools uh this week and the week after. So they all get a shot at it.
Um, and then um in coordination with our wellness committee, just a little update there. Um I've been working with Annalise and the rest of the wellness committee. Um one of the initiatives that precedes me was to. Um revamp or see where we can improve um nutrition curriculum. Um so we ident, we met with elementary, middle and high school staff. Um and identified some areas of potential improvement, um such as at the elementary school, the P E teachers are going to meet. Um to come up with some ideas on integrating more play-based um nutrition knowledge, relay races, my plate relay races, stuff like that. Or getting a little more hands-on um with fruit and vegetables while they're running around. Um the middle school does a great job at um nutrition curriculum. Through their um life arts courses. Um but we did add a virtual cafeteria orientation um that took place last week, I believe, March thirteenth. Um at that step-up day for the fourth grade and um parents. Um and then we're working on creating more streamlined experiences for nutrition um taught via the freshman wellness classes.
Then we had our greenhouse opening. Um Eric, Jeff and Danielle was there. Uh for, for the, it's at the Flanders building. We have a little video of the ribbon cutting.
The big scissors and the ripping.
Saving them for the baseball field.
And it was that we planted the other day, our starting journey, which is pretty exciting. So um the next step will be letting these go a little bit more than you have to put them in containers like we did with two lettuce. Lettuce seems to be doing pretty well.
Yeah, so um Gary's, Gary's the one that's taking lead on this already over there because he takes care of the main garden. Um. So his class actually already started to plant some stuff for the greenhouse. And then we did a uh. We had an apples pickup from Scott's. That was our last pickup of the year. And we had uh all his students sign the banner and we're gonna put it on the side of the, the greenhouse. And we thought every year we could do like a. Grand opening and same thing, we'll get a banner, the class can kind of take ownership. And then it'll be their greenhouse, you know, for the year. Uh but we're also gonna be incorporating every grade actually in it. Where each class will get their own tray. They'll start growing stuff and we're actually putting raised beds at Niantic Center. And those will be the starters for the Niantic Center garden. So it'll be like a center hub greenhouse that'll feed the other school gardens. And then eventually, hopefully, we can get little gardens growing at all the different schools. I had asked Chris about, I was like, how do we have apples in, you know, the middle of February sort of thing? Um but Scott's actually keeps them in a temperature controlled. Yeah, they have a temperature controlled uh ware, like warehouse in the back that, that keeps it and they keep all their um extra supplies for us. So we pretty much, they supply us all the way up to March usually. Just really pretty neat. This is great, bags of apples. I'm like, wait a minute, it's like February.
We saw it really well.
Yeah.
You have questions or no? What are you finding as far as the kids? Are they, um have they tasted most of the things that you're presenting? Are they, do they have a lot of?
They're, they're very, you know, depending on the, the age level. Um like I said, we tried to get some. Um, like I said, we tried to get some more, like she made the butternut squash, macaroni and cheese where the main ingredient was the butternut. Not heavy cheeses that get them into trying it. So it's something they associate with. They're like, oh, mac and cheese. I like mac and cheese. So they try it. Um, same with a lot of the vegetables.
Finding or do you, do you think that they're, have they been exposed to it? Are they, do they like it or is they?
Some, some do. Yeah, it depends on, on the families, you know, a lot of, um, a lot of families have a lot of different things at, at home and. So there are, are kids who jump right at it and, and they're still the ones that don't want anything to do with it, so. Uh, but it, it depends on the grade level. The high school, it's really, we have those bowls that we do on Wednesdays that have really taken off. That we do all kinds of crazy things and they, the kids love it. We usually sell out on most Wednesdays. We do our.
Well, I think the exposure is really good, so that opportunity with our list is really good. And then I'm wondering, uh, about composting. Are you doing some composting now? I've seen where there's some schools cafeterias where they'll have food waste only, so.
We, we have looked into it. We have a group actually at the high school that maybe wants to start looking into, into maybe planning. It, it is a large undertaking, so, uh, unfortunately, we don't have many facilities in the state of Connecticut that actually take it. Um, so there's of course costs related to doing those type of things also. So it's, uh, and also getting your health department on board. It's all those type of things. So it's, it's a large undertaking, but, uh.
I know other school districts do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen it. And then.
Any names of those key, if you can let us know. Middletown does it? We can kind of take a look, cause.
Yeah, really, it's just needing to see the brattle and, and seeing that it actually works. That's the.
Well, I'm working out right now. They have.
Yeah.
I could send you a picture. And then the third thing is my husband's still involved with Karen Cher locally. And I know a lot of our food that we package up and, and hand out to homes and to families. It's almost like prepackaged stuff. It's like this quick or it's canned soup. And I know at home, like I will take some chicken thighs and make three or four meals out of it. You know, boiling, making soup, making tortillas, making, you know, multiple things. Is there any opportunity? I know it's outside of your wheelhouse because you're supposed to feed, but that educational piece and being able to. Stretch your family food dollar, I think is so important. It starts when you're young.
Yeah, yeah, um, well, a lot of that, we, you know, I'm sure we try to push through the other classes that we already have at schools. But we do do some stuff with the, the culinary classes and, um, we try to do a lot of partnerships with them as much as we can during the year. Yeah, it's, it's really.
Curious, it's, you know, we could, we can solve the hunger crisis, I think. If we just work together more cooperatively on that, but thank you for all that you do. Appreciate it.
Good question regarding the pre-breakfast. Is, we still have those? Uh, is there, are there any quote strings attached by the federal government or the state government for us to meet certain standards? To be able.
Well, we have to follow the USDA regulations on it. It's just instead of the parents paying for it right now, the state government gets paying for it.
I'm just thinking, I'm working in another school also. And it just seems like at lunch, there's a lot of carbs that are coming out, uh, coming out of the kitchen. But I don't know if that's typical for a middle school.
For breakfast, they have to have a milk, a whole grain and a fruit.
What about at lunch?
They have to have.
Yeah, there's five components.
I'll chat with you later.
Yeah.
Like a lot of carbs.
But that. Yeah, and when they did this whole rea- reauthorization in two thousand and ten, um, when, uh, President Obama was in office. And his wife was the, the main pusher of this, they, um, they can, they completely changed everything completely around. And some of the levels, like, you know, there's protein levels that are set that are low, which really are too low. Um, but they don't ever penalize you for going over it. Uh, that's the good thing, but.
Curious, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Jamie wants to know when we're gonna get our rhubarb.
Be in the spring. There's three big patches in there now, so there's plenty to make.
I didn't share it. We don't share it.
I never share it. I bring it home and I hide it.
So we have the two certifications that we want to move on to while we're here. Any questions before?
Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed, the proposed healthy food certification, HFC statement. Through an option as presented, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section ten, two, one, five, F. Eastland Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students of the schools under its jurisdiction. And not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July one, twenty twenty-fourth through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources. Including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, any fundraising activities. On school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organization and groups.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes unanimously. This one's a little longer, Jamie.
A motion to approve the proposed healthy food certification, HFC statement, food and beverage exemptions as presented. The Eastland Board of Education will allow the state, the sale to students of food items. That do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverage is not listed in section ten dash two, two, one, Q. Of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the, of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays and interscholastic debates are events. But soccer practices, play rehearsals and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is and being held, it must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
Uh, any questions on that one? Uh, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain and motion passes unanimously. Thank you, uh, and Jamie for reading those motions. Thanks, uh, Chris and Danielle.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, the next, uh, discussion action item. So we're moving on to discussion, facilities, asset and building improvements. So we had, um. Uh, Elisa, myself, Jeff, Kevin, Chris, one, Mariana.
And Diane.
And Elise wasn't there, okay. Diane, Diane, okay. I knew there was one more person there, so. Um, we met last week and went through, there's a whole list of potential projects. And we went through and kind of came up with a group of prioritized projects. And, and one of the key prioritization lenses that we used is. Projects that will have a impact on the most number of students or students and staff or whatever. So that impact on the number, broad range of, of people. Um, not something especially near that, you know, with only going to impact two students. Even if it was kind of on the important side, we, that would not be as prioritized as something that could impact a whole bunch of students. So that was, that was kind of the broad discussion and went through. And if we did attach, um, a list, it came out today, so a little later today, so, um, you may be first looking at.
Yeah, I mean, we, and we just up to, if you did look at it today, um, because we had, we had pulled it this morning off of that larger list Eric mentioned. But then, um, we looked again and we made some further, um, additions just to kind of round it out. Um, so if you looked at it earlier this afternoon, um, it changed as of five thirty, so. Yeah, so what you're looking at in Word docs is the final, final kind of rough, rough draft.
Probably, uh, we're gonna kind of think about themes. There's the high school library, right? And that we can optimize that space to make, create some collaborative environments. Uh, you know, there's a lot of books all around and we can create and take that space and put some glass, um. Partitions, um, we have to get a little creative with it, but something like that where students could go in there. And, and or teachers can go in there and have meetings and collaborations with some technology, um. So that, yeah, so there's, there's kind of this library enhancement. And we're gonna get some type of rendering or look of what it could be, but that's something that got prioritized. The auditorium, that there's some opportunities in the auditorium, that you look and you look out that. You know, the left and right wings that there, we could do something with the chairs and maybe adding desks. So we could have classroom style lectures in there if we wanted to. We could have, uh, meetings and, and other opportunities where you kind of partition and partition. You won't, won't be partitioned off, but you know, at least it kind of is in having those discussions. But also the overall, you know, what can we do with the auditorium to make it look nicer and have an impact on. Again, students, community use that as, as well. And then, so those are two, and then the other one's missing, I just realized, is that partition.
Oh, for the, um.
Yeah, so we also talked, I'll add that, that it's not on air. We talked, we may want to add a partition in the commons. To create a cafeteria and the atrium. Okay, so the commons is the full area, just and to make it where it, we have the option to have it open. But we can also have it closed where it's cafeteria and atrium, which would allow more study halls or other things in this atrium. And cut off some of the noise, um, in that, that, for those, and if I get this wrong, please add. The other thing benefited, Chris just left, but one of the reasons we cannot use the funds. From the, um. Foods is because this is a common area, so it's not just one. But if we add the partition, then anything within the cafeteria space. The food money could look for, to spend money for improvements to tables and other things in that area. So that, I have that right or?
I'll grant you.
Just putting up a wall gives us permission to access that.
Yeah, and right now it's multipurpose, so you can't, the state won't allow.
And it would optimize the space, I think that, that you're right, you would, there's some benefits in addition to that, um, that we would have. So that was something we need to put on this list. And then, um, we've looked at the, the south gym, which if you have a chance to. Go in and walk through the south gym, it just is, it, it's dated. The, the, the floor has been there probably for, I don't know how many, ten, tens of years, uh, many tens of years. And it needs some painting and cleanup and, and so there's some opportunity. And a lot of people use that facility, so it is something, cheerleading is in there now, track uses it. So it's a pretty broad, highly used facility, again, number of people who go through that, it's actually a lot that go through that. The fitness center, we talked about as well, because not only do it's used before school, it's used after school. It's used during school and classes go through there, but community members also use that. So if we could do something that, that would not only impact the students in our schools. But it helps the community members who would then have memberships and can go and utilize that. And then the locker room, for those of you who have not seen the state of our locker room. It's in dire need of, of some, some upgrade or, or not even upgrades. It's just, it's just in bad shape and, you know, from a community, uh, from a culture. And, um, from a culture and climate perspective, it really, um. It kind of gives the impression that we don't care that much, um, and like how we letting it go to that. Um, so putting an investment also in that says it. So maybe I, I know the main gym, the sound dampening, if you go through the main, the north gym. You go through there, it does rain sometimes, some, uh, insulation. Sailing, yeah.
Down attenuating foam was.
Yes, so, um.
Falling people.
That maybe do something with that, yeah, it's, I don't think it's as bad as what was going on in the pool necessarily, but it still does fall. Uh, there is, is stuff and if you spend a lot of time on there, if you sweep one day, you come the next day, there is more debris on the floor, so. I'll let Chris and Jeff, that was kind of my.
Let's add a little bit to it, um, so just briefly, um. Partition or the wall or whatever we do, divide the cafeteria with the atrium, we would certainly be looking at something that's. Uh, movable or openable or something so that we aren't putting a fixed wall in there. So I, uh, I spoke with Devon, some of her staff today, Henry and Julie and David Fisulo. Um, without some of the work that's on those lists and making sure that we incorporate their ideas and give them the sense of where we are going. With some of the, some of the work that's already approved and in the future, so, um, I think that was good, good discussion. We had some great ideas. We have no shortage of ideas, so I know you got the shortened list in front of you, but we have like the longer list. We're already working on that. I know Kevin Marco is, um, doing his part, working with, you know, locker manufacturers and whatnot. And to piggyback on what Eric said, um, there is a lot of wasted space as well, those lockers. That's just not being used anymore, uh, because the athletes and the students don't use it in the same manner in which it was built. Uh, as well as conditions sort of excludes it, so not only are we looking at, you know, improving the locker situation. But trying to maximize that space for other purposes, you know, a team room in the boy's side, team room, the girl's side. So that, you know, if it's a basketball game that day, you know, they have a nice team locker room to work out of. Or, you know, trying to bring the wrestling team back here permanently so that they're not putting it down to hands to, for the practices and whatnot. So I think we can do a lot with just the space that we have by maximizing it better. And we may even find like the help of all this classroom in there too, when it's all said and done. So a lot to be done, a lot of ideas, um, within the existing framework that we have until such point. At the time that maybe we are expanding beyond, uh, current walls, so.
Also, yeah.
Might just a quick one clarifying question. I'm sorry if I missed this. The list, uh, is in front of us. Is that in the recommended order of priority? Like that's, is that a stack ranked list or?
It's not, good question. It, it's right now, cause we need to price this stuff out too and there's some. There's another realm for all of us that needs to kind of come back and maybe with less rendering, like, well, what would, what are, you know, we talk about the library. Well, what are we talking, what will it look like and how does it all work and, and all? And, you know, if you come back and say it's three million dollars to renovate, well, then it's gonna drop on the prior. It's not going to be, but I mean, it's gonna drop in the priority, cause we're, we're not gonna be able to do that. Maybe just add one thing, it is, we are trying to use funds that we have left, you know, assuming this year continues. We will have some fun with a warm winter. We're gonna have some fun in utilities, a little down, cost down. We're gonna have some funds left over, so we want to use that. And then, you know, we did talk about the funds for next, next year as well. So it's not that we're gonna have a lot of money, but we should have some money that we can kick off some of these. Um, Jamie and Linky.
So my first question is the carpet in the auditorium, is there asbestos underneath that?
No, actually there isn't.
I would think age-wise, there should be, but.
Um, it's been tested though and it's, it's nothing underneath the carpet there. So whatever materials that they use to put the carpet down, there isn't any. There are places in the building still that do have asbestos, but that's not one of those that's been listed. Now, due to the age, of course, before we do anything, we'll retest it to make sure.
Um, and then my second thing is, is I remember the locker rooms when the lockers were ripped out by the students. That's why it's so not nice. Um, so my concern is, is making it nice and having the students destroy it again. Not nice, um, so my concern is, is making it nice and having the students destroy it again. What kind of things are we gonna put in place to make the students responsible for fixing the things that they've damaged?
Change the look of it completely, like the lockers right now have, some of them have the doors that close, and that's what kids have kicked in over the years. Um, and some are completely off, there's only, I don't know how many that are left that are still hanging, but we would change the whole. Facade of what that looks like, with more probably like just open spaces with hooks. So you don't have the kicking in of doors and the breaking of metal, that sort of thing.
Here, they were completely destroyed and unusable.
Yeah, you should see them.
All their stuff in the front lobby.
Yeah, most of the doors are, are all off, there's still a few doors that are on, like some of those that you walked around saw, that some of them are dented in, um, and still on.
Like the TikToks of last year when people were.
Yeah, that was the, that was.
We give them nice things and then they destroy that, like, how do we put things in place to make sure they don't destroy the nice things that we give them?
We had that kind of exact conversation with Kevin as well. And, um, there's a little element of culture and climate, but Kevin is definitely thinking about that exact thing is. Yeah, you do all this stuff and then. No cameras in the locker. So.
Hate to say, here, here's this beautiful new locker room, and then like a week later, it's gone.
It's a valid, uh, valid point.
Taxpayers are paying for this and.
One of the pieces too, I think, um, more entry cameras, those that are walking into the locker room, out the hallways, so we have more visibility there. Um, changing some of that setup, um, just, just some more visibility from P E teachers of sorts. I think that came up in some of our conversations, so just more eyes that, that both that are in there, uh, are supposed to be in there, you know, can be looking.
Cause I'd love to give them these nice new things, but I, on the flip side, they've been destroying a lot of things in the building lately.
And Kevin also mentioned, I can't, I think, was that we would, that the locker rooms in general are open all the time. That we'd actually lock the locker rooms.
My kids here, they had stuff stolen out of their lockers. Prove through steals, because there's no cameras anywhere.
See who's going in at the what time. Right, that was another piece that was brought up, that we, we keep them locked more frequently, controlled more, if it's necessary.
And I think it does have people, I think people walk through periodically. Physic teachers or, or others, you know, that, there, he, he does go through, obviously, the men's locker, the boys' locker. But, um, to get some of that as well. A randomness is good to that, uh, not going through the same time each time, but.
I'm good.
So I was wondering about the auditorium, you're talking about. Maybe restructuring it to some extent, and I'm wondering what capacity is for the auditorium, because I don't think I've ever seen where the. Back two wings have ever been filled up and. Maybe if people don't want to sit towards the front, they'll sit back there in almost that space, I know it's upon a rise, but. It almost seems like those are spaces that could be reconstructed somehow, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, so, and, and I probably, I've not seen those yet, because we've never done it since I've been here, but. They recessed into the wall are portable walls that will actually close out and, and enclose those spaces, so the two.
Conceivably be classrooms or.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, you know, eventually ideally is you replace the chairs up there with chairs that with flip up desk arm, and maybe plug. So that you can plug in your device and you improve the wifi and you roll in, you know, big screen TV when you need to, and you have. Equivalent of a, of college lecture hall.
Nice, so my, I was, I was wondering about that, so, um. Would we look at like some design components, because I think that if we had some architecture students, people who are interested in, in maybe. Uh, solicit, um, designing and having us look at them or having you look at them to see. Like what would make sense and what would look more modern, so that we would have things that could be put into place, not just something that. People who, that's not their wheelhouse too, but it is your wheelhouse, so.
And a year and a half ago is, you know, I brought in a. Furnishing firm and architectural group that had done a lot of, of, just to get a sense of. You know, what's achievable, so, you know, we would certainly utilize somebody with the expertise to do it again. I think we would still, we're sort of still within the existing structure, um, obviously, we could use some. Like you said, some aesthetics to make it look better, make it look more, within the existing walls, but. And we wouldn't just do it all.
Which need kid is a bigger auditor, because it only houses six hundred, six, six hundred, six sixty, six fifty. And we can't use it for assemblies for kids, that's the biggest problem, all the kids have to go in the gym.
Right.
Assemblies.
Right.
It should be in the auditorium where you've got the stage, you have presenters coming in, here they're having to use the gym space. Which currently has been unair conditioned, which is not a problem, it will be air conditioned this summer, but that's a major issue as well, so. We just need a bigger auditor.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yes, I have one question, and maybe this is a question for. He set aside some money for, for in building improved, right, you know, that, you know, and I. Unfortunately, we didn't get it in the board of finance meeting, but was that question? There was some questions around the turf and stuff.
We did the board of select and then meeting, we, board of finances. Yeah, that was part of, who seemed actually pretty supportive of the idea.
They did, yeah.
That was my.
Yeah, they were supportive of our overall increase, the only thing they weren't supportive, that was that, what I put in my weekly update. Um, and going down the turf field, they, all the roof projects and the turf field, they asked that they went to bump, they bumped the turf field a year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but the roof projects are still, still in capital, one of the other capital.
I, I thought that was, okay, I, I missed, but anyways, it's still, still in contention, so there's still a possibility that we'll get, get. Okay, so, and, okay, all right, thank you, that, I just wanted to make sure that, okay, it's not, not being flagged or anything, so, thank you for that. And I'd just like to maybe tag on to what, what Jamie pointed out, that, you know, I think we need, we do need to make the students aware that, you know. The town is paying for it, the taxpayers are paying for it, and I think they own this, it's, it's, you know, yeah, they stay here for maybe four years, but they own this, you know, this is. This is their town's property, and so, now, maybe we use, you know, I think when Kevin was here, he was talking about the team captains, they're kind of very responsible. I think maybe we engage that, that group of, of, of students and say that, maybe, you know. You know, yeah, if you're going to pay for this, you, you take care of it, kind of a thing, we do, I think, I, I'm on, on Jamie, you know, and if, if students do. Damage stuff, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's a bummer, I mean, I, I don't know how to react to that, I, I, I wouldn't have expected that, but it. I, I can see that happening now that you bring it up, so.
Can you just make clear with the students, there will be consequences, and the consequences are A, B, C, and D.
Well, there are consequences now.
Yeah, you just have to be able to prove.
Yeah, that's the catch is, you know, there's no cameras in there, so you don't know who exactly.
You have the cameras in the locker room. Okay.
The, the, those are like areas that trouble happens, right, bathrooms, locker, right, that's probably the. So, in locker rooms, you need cameras actually on both sides, because you got the, the camera going in the locker room. Entrance into wherever, there's two entrances to the locker room, right, so you need cameras on either side. And our bathrooms do, are, are all of our bathrooms covered with cameras right now, or none of them are?
All the hallways, uh, yeah, hallways that lead into the bathroom, like, so if, if you, and, and do our cameras record for any amount of time?
And so theoretically, if a bathroom got trashed, we would be able to look at all the footage and figure out every single kid who went into that bathroom that day.
Correct. We're trying, one of the things we're doing right now is having kids sign in and sign out of the bathroom, so that we can try to narrow the timeframe. Kids have access to only a couple bathrooms, that's a lot of people in and out of the course of the day. Could do something similar with the locker room, we're also looking into using Infinite Campus for sign in, sign out purposes too.
Do we have any of those favorite things in the bathrooms right now?
Expensive.
Detector in there?
Oh, it's blow the vapor, smoke into the toilet, flush the toilet, um, you know, there's, there's ways around, we've heard, we've talked to other districts. Uh, about it too, um, just haven't found the costs outweighing the, you know, putting them in sort of thing.
Mr. Kidd said that, you know, if you put in some detectors, they just vandalize.
For school with a great reputation, this.
Well, we're not the only one.
No, I know, I know, I know.
But just, you know. Yeah, I mean, do we have it more than others is, is the question, you know, because this locker room has been, you know, it's years of damage. So when you look at it, it looks, oh my god, what just happened, sort of thing, but that's.
But I, I, I hear what Jamie's saying, and, and I hear what you're saying, but. I think part of it is. We've got to change the climate and culture, but part of it is too, i- is if something is trashed. It almost lends itself to being more trash, where you walk in and everything is mint. It, it's a different situation, and I think it's hard to, that, I, I mean, I apologize, because I know I was supposed to. Be at some of these meetings, but, you know, for me, I, I think you're right, we're doing the common areas, but. I think a lot is said by walking into the locker room or the bathroom, and i- in, in the public, like, if you're attending. I, and our art, art, auditorium is dated, but it, I don't think it's ugly, and I don't think it's. You know, it's, but if you walk into our bathroom, that's a different situation, you know, it, you feel like. Good, you know, what's going on here, so, and. I don't know, like. I think there's a lot to be said about fresh paint and maybe a durable solution and, and. New look, facelift for locker rooms and bathrooms, and those are spaces where, and then monitoring. Better both ends with cameras and saying, you know, this is, but. When, when something's trashed already, and then you know something else happened, it's like, okay, was that there yesterday, is that not there yesterday? Um, you know, was that, you know, was that graffiti there yesterday, is that new graffiti, that's, that's kind of. You, you know.
It shows we don't really necessarily.
I remember, I remember years ago, we had a custodian that took such pride in our school that if. Anything like that happened in any one of the bathrooms, like, it was painted, repaired, fixed. Before the kids even got to school, like, that was just, so, this is, this is an old line, there was a kid, Dave, a custodian, Dave Monday. He took such pride in that building that there would not be a bit of graffiti that anyone would get to look at. To be able to add to or snowball the thing, now, that person has since passed, and I mean, you know, we, we still. Do a decent job there, but I do think when it's, it's hard. To hold high expectations when the lockers are already kicked in, yeah, so.
We're past the point of, you know, even the custodians saying, who, who do care, want, you know, they're, they're trying to get it, but. Things are just, I think, so bad, or at a point where, you know, it's kind of like they've given up, uh, my, my interpretation.
Oh, this is only somewhat related, but it sparked my, my thinking, do we still, uh, as part of Spirit Week do. The like volunteer school beautification day, no? Something that, I mean, again, I, it's not gonna make a difference on, you know, most of these items, but there was something really nice about. Picking a Saturday where students would come into school and were incentivized, like I remember painting bathrooms or. Weeding gar, you know, garden beds with the rest of my class and.
Dr. Lynn doesn't know anything about any of those days.
Oh, okay, I'm naming myself, this was a long time ago. Yeah, around there, around there, no, but the whole class would come to school on a Saturday and. It would be assigned different projects around the building, and I, I think it speaks to the point around, you know, having pride in your school and. Contributing to keeping things, uh, beautiful.
And own it, because you made it better, you own it.
Because the parking lot doesn't get vandalized, does it? At one time we did.
Nobody's gonna touch that.
Point, nobody touches those, uh.
Point, that's what roll.
I don't give anyone ideas. But unfortunately, they are egging each other's cars.
Cheesing, they have cheese slices in their cars, the kids in school are getting their cars egged and cheesed at parties and stuff.
I understand the egg.
Eggs and cheese are expensive, oh. You gotta have money to be egging and cheesing.
Throwing eggs coming back, uh, that was, you know, a hundred years ago, that was the crazy thing that people did.
Is this something we want to revisit, like, put it on a list, I think it's a great idea, because then the kids, students own it. I think how good you feel when you clean your kitchen or your bedroom or something. Yeah, oh, we will.
Yeah, and it was, it was, it was gamified too, so we were incentivized to be the. Most, yeah, the most students from each class would earn points towards, towards Spirit Week, so. We had a lot of people show up for, I mean, like, I, it's been a while, and I still remember that, that kind of.
Over time, there were more things to do in the building, and it became a lot of trash pickup.
Okay.
That would be a good, because, yeah, there's a lot of, you know, especially when kids are eating outside, when it gets a little warmer, we put the. The, um, tent covers back up, that, that happens a lot.
So, um, with regards to this, we're gonna have, we're gonna have more information, we're gonna come back, we're gonna discuss more. We do have to make, um. By June, Mariana, June thirtieth, we need P O's through. To spend the money this year, the work doesn't have to get done, but the P O's have to be approved. By June thirtieth, to spend this year's money, um, that one's left, so there's a little bit of a time crunch for some of us.
Can you say that one more time?
Sure.
They have to be approved?
The P O's need to, purchase orders. June thirtieth, which is the end of our fiscal.
Right, okay, no, I just wanted to know.
But the work does not have to be done.
When will we know how much money will be available?
Yeah, we have a good idea, I don't know.
I, I, I would say at the end of March, when I do the, the third quarter projections, we'll have a better idea. We'll be getting into the warmer months, so, um, electricity, natural gas, won't be so, um. You know, I, I'll, it, it, there's only three months, there'll only be three months left at that point, so I think at that point, we'll have a better handle.
But there should be enough money to tackle some of this, you know, it's not, not, definitely not all of it, but there should be enough to have some impact.
I know Chris and Diane are already working on some of those, you know, new numbers and, you know, scope and. What some of this might look like, so.
Any other issues on this? And we'll just keep.
So sure, then your money, we're at.
Okay, last action, discussion action item is the Board of Retreat. Board of Ed Retreat Preparation, so, um, Jeff. Um, and Elise and I met. Last week.
Yeah, it was last week.
Uh, I just kind of came up with some thoughts of what would be good to discuss at the retreat, and that's what's in the attach, but. We're open for, if there's anything we're missing or anything, you say, eh, I don't know that we need to, so this is just an, an ideas, idea list. Um, for, for feedback, so that was. Just seeing if you guys, if everyone.
Diane, for this is April first.
It's April first, yes, uh, Lee.
Um, yeah, so I, I think the buckets of topics are great, I think my two like thoughts or things to consider. Uh, as part of the planning process is, number one, I feel like we always run out of time, uh. And so, I, I like the breadth of what we have here, and it might be helpful, you think through, like. What are the three outcomes we want from this retreat, and then make sure that the inputs are aligned to that, so. It'd be great if we could get to all of this, but at the end of the day, like, what are the two things that we need to walk away from speeding having achieved? So that we can structure the time to make sure that we hit those things.
Is there anything, do you have any thoughts on?
Put me on the spot, um, as far as what I would prioritize.
And, yeah, either if you don't send us an email too, either way, so, but if there's.
Oh, noodle on it a bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause I think we're meeting again, it's not here. And Elise, do you know when we're meeting, this, this week or next?
Yes, we are meeting, I think we're trying to meet on Thursday.
On Thursday, okay.
But I don't know, that hasn't been finalized, that's the last I heard.
Okay.
I think section one is great and important. I think section one is great and important, and that feels like something that we could tackle a good chunk of it asynchronously. I don't necessarily know that that need, that that feedback needs to occur during our our retreat. So I would probably index more on two and three as far as setting ourselves up for success for a strong year. And then digging into one and four, if we have time, is kind of my initial sense of what I would.
Great.
General alignment with that?
Well, I I agree, but my comment is. For the board and we're serving our administrators, shouldn't we be asking them for the feedback on how we're functioning and serving as a board? And giving them direction or support that they need?
I feel the um, just to clarify, that first topic is, or number one was, we introduced the administrative report.
I understand.
So are we, we've asked them to come and present to our.
Understand, we've gotten a better vision or understanding because we're not allowed to go into the schools. So we're allowed to hear them report to us about what they're wanting us to hear about what's in the school. So I understand that, but my question is, do our administrators feel like we're giving, and teachers feel like we are giving them as a board? The support that they need in helping them drive the drive the bus down the right path?
Yeah, so I mean, it's interesting.
You get what I'm saying?
So.
Kind of like we hear them when they're presenting.
Right.
I would say yes.
I don't know. I mean, you I mean, you have your ear to the ground. You have your.
That's why I say yes.
So, okay.
Definitely. Yeah, yeah.
That's what we want to know. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can share at the retreat or or now, but you know, I have the feedback generally. Although I we haven't collected it formally um around the board goals and their, how there's breadth there in wiggle room to. E- you know, develop targets that could look different year to year, but the broad goals are really helpful in streamlining the work. From the Board of Ed level to the central office level, to the building level, to even the classroom teacher.
Right.
And so, you know, from that perspective, I think um it's been very helpful in sort of drawing that through line.
And and maintaining that those goals really rolling into next year. I'm gonna kind of say now, we'll talk about it as we move forward. But um I wouldn't want to change that umbrella um much, uh, because there's so much work that's going on underneath them, as Annalise said.
Yeah, like the targets might change, right? But.
Of course.
Yeah.
I mean, I've worked in schools my whole life, and I've worked in schools from Utah and Massachusetts to back to Nebraska. And here in Connecticut and word of words of ads, each one in each district that I've ever worked has had different reputations. And so, you know, are we collectively a word that's respected and revered by our teachers and administrators and families? I don't know. That's the question I'm I'm asking, so. We need feedback as well, I think.
The same.
Say very much so.
Very much so what?
Very much so that respected, yes. Yes, you do a lot for our district. I think you hear, listen to teachers, uh, staff, not just teachers, all staff. And do a good job with that.
Well, good. That's the best.
That's my perspective. What I hear from people, uh, yeah, the the board is, the board listens. You demonstrated that last year with the budget process.
I mean, we could incorporate in in this maybe is it's we're on the retreat side, so. Apologies, my negativity towards it was think was more about, this is our Board of Ed having a discussion about how we function. But getting, if we have these surveys that go out to our staff and stuff. And if we added a couple of questions on how the Board of Ed had, what's your.
Their listening skills and their effectiveness and whether or not we I think we do a good job at what.
And then we can take that feedback and talk about how we function and what we can do differently based on that feedback. So that that's from the staff, yeah, so when the survey that we do, we add questions. And it could be, you know, I don't know if we do, we open ended or we don't do any open ended.
Uh, we're, we're working on that right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
You could have questions with one may, one maybe open ended, because it may not capture in the questions that are specific.
Just say this, my personal interpretation is that I work for, I work for the children, the parents. But probably most importantly, I work for the staff. And technically, you work for us, but I feel like in some sense, I mean, I work for you, and that's why I would like more feedback. I have no idea. I think that's one of the reasons I want to go into the schools is because I want to understand, I want to be sure I understand that we're giving them the support that they need. And I I I mean, if they don't like, if we're not being effective in their daily jobs, then uh or professions, whatever you want to call it. I'd really like to know. I want to be sure we're okay.
Yeah, through surveys is the best way to gather that information. Going to the school, Joe, we're gonna walk around. We've got the bill smoking.
No, I know, I know.
We can't sit there and engage teachers in conversations because they're.
No, I know. We disagree with this. Let's all just, I agree to disagree with you.
So but that's that's Diane, so.
But maybe we, so maybe in the survey part, maybe we can look into adding a few questions that pertain to us and.
Yes.
Perception or what they, how they feel, the interactions and are we providing so that that could, and then we can utilize that information. In our, we're not gonna have it for this retreat, but for a future retreat, we can utilize that for both our goals and for our retreat and how we function operate. I saw Olivia and then Esteban and then Bill, did you have your hand up? Okay, and then Kate.
I'm curious, how often do we have retreats?
Sixteen years, right?
Yeah.
Just a meeting to kind of check in and see like what our process is and review.
Kind of how our internal look of what are we doing? Are we functioning well? Are there things we need to do differently? And it's a chance that. With a sole focus of that, uh, so it's it's an inward look um on ourselves. I I I'll let others describe. That's how I.
No, I think that's accurate.
Thank you.
Hey, kind of to to respond to to Jill's comment, so like maybe as part of our, when we do our our goal setting for next year. Uh, maybe implement, uh, maybe like open houses where like we can sit down and the 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 staff can comment back to us necessarily. Cause I know like interrupting their their in the middle of the day is not the ideal, because they're in the middle of handling the students, teaching the subjects. But maybe, you know, to improve communication back and forth, maybe implementing like open house.
Chat with your.
Yeah, or sort of something like that. Um, that'll be good, so we get some feedback.
And your.
I want.
Yeah, it's on a P D day, which I've never been to, so I don't know what they're like, so it might not be, but it like.
Development, they don't have time to talk to us.
But at lunch or something like that, if there was a chance where we showed up and they could, if people could come talk to us, that might be an opportunity.
Incorporate something into a lunch case, but we have so few P A P D hours, it's such a struggle, and we talk about that all the time. But yeah, maybe.
I don't know.
If you're running a lunch or like you said, I like that idea, too.
It's hard to say, oh, after your school day, we're gonna have an open house.
Buy them dinner. Well, maybe it's a guiding question we add to the retreat agenda is how can we um.
Yeah.
You know, find what are some ways in which we can get feedback from the community?
Yeah.
Um, you know, and our stakeholders.
Yeah.
I just want more.
And we do have money. We have seven hundred and fifty dollars that we did create a fund to buy. Stuff for our staff, so fund the Board of Ed, so whatever we do, so there is some. Should we do? Um, it was Esteban and then.
But that was it. That was it.
And then Kate and then Jill.
Okay, so are we going to have somebody facilitating this on April first, Annalise? Okay. And then my second question is um Board of Ed Collaboration number two, point bullet number three. How can we leverage the diverse expertise and perspective of our members to enhance the work around our goals? I like that, but then I I think at a point, we know each other pretty well after we've worked together for a couple of years, a few years, some of us. But maybe there's things that we want to share that, you know, as each individual board member, um. Maybe that's the way to do it, like what 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 do we each see as our strength that we bring to the board would be the best way to enlist that might be my opinion.
Bill, yeah, true.
Could you add on this survey, like something that asks is, is there any way, is there any, do you see, I don't know how to phrase this. What are the faults with the board? Or is there any thing that we could improve? Negative.
I do like, well, like, what do you want to see more of and what do you want to see less of? I think there are aspects that I would imagine folks find that we bring great value and are very useful. And then there's probably other things that we focus on that maybe staff were like, I need the Board of Ed to do less of that, or I'd rather them prioritize other things. So um I do think it's a good question to ask.
You said it correctly.
Yeah, you're gross and gross.
I'm gross.
To me, the the list, the list of things that we want to tackle makes sense, and I I I, you know, I don't want to speak for Olivia, but but maybe she isn't, you know, she's thinking the same thing. You know, myself and Olivia, we are kind of new at this. I, you know, I mean, again, if you can take a small amount of time for three months. Whatever we have done, if we can get feedback from other board members, whether we are, what we are doing right, what we are doing wrong, what we could do more, what we could do less. You know, again, it's a very short timeframe, but it would really help us out, so.
Oh, well, tell you. It's a pretty honest board.
He's he's been keeping this.
But no matter, I'm I'm I'll I'll.
Yeah, 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 definitely.
Gosh, that's.
And you can also feel free to talk to any of us at any time and to to get uh feedback as well, but yeah, yeah, we we um, that would be good. Other thoughts?
No, just good, good feedback is what we're looking.
My only thought is to have the shortest meeting possible on the first or no meeting at all.
Well, that's.
Because you know.
Plan. We've got.
The short meeting always seems to drag out to make it a long meeting, no matter how short of agenda we choose. It still ends up being like the long short meeting.
There was something we had.
Have to do graduation day.
We have to, the graduations date, we have Nyanic Center doing a a brief, so Jeff, a brief presentation, because they're up for the month, uh, and then policies that just need. First read on policies, new ones that are coming forward. And that was it. That was our, all we had planned.
And we're gonna, we're not gonna have.
No student reps.
Um, I don't think we get the, we don't get select reps anyway, so I I.
That's right, and that'll be the day they show up, huh?
She'll be packed at lunch.
What, dinner if you want? If you want to do a dinner, we can have a dinner brought in.
Cookies. Carla's cookies.
I was thinking about, I mean, depending on how long we're gonna be, I'll I'll definitely.
Just casually.
Yeah, let's bring in a little soup or sandwiches and cookies. How's that?
No soup, it's pills.
Okay, sandwiches.
I've been, I've been through this before, Stu.
Okay, um, anything else on the retreat? So Jeff, Annalise and I all need to kind of just file as the framework, and then we'll make sure we get that out for everyone to see.
Yeah, you get it. It's not true. Eric, did you get all the answers you wanted?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if anything between now, that was it, if anything between now and Thursday, if there's something, hey, I thought that we, it would be great if we could or whatever. Just email Jeff or yourself or Annalise or something.
Is there a calendar anybody for this?
It should be the normal.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be. It's a normal board meeting that will, yeah, we'll carve up and yeah, but we found that the easiest way, try to find another date for people. Uh, and get everyone together as far as if one, we have a date on the calendar already.
Okay.
And we'll 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 identify it as immediately following the regular ed meeting. So if we, the regular meeting ends in a half an hour or forty minutes, we'll start right away with retreat. Exclude everybody, excuse everybody.
Okay, that closes our discussion action items. Moving to administration reports, and Jeff.
Yeah, a couple of quick items. Um, I just wanted to circle back because we we keep it in the weekly update, but I don't know if it's growing stale, the newsletters that are in there. Um, I know people are taking advantage of or have the opportunity to read, like, the the high schools, there's so much, like, I'll use pathways. So much stuff going on in there. It answers a lot of questions that, you know, sometimes you you have. So if you get a chance, just try and glance at those newsletters. I know there's just a lot of information in there. Um, if you haven't been doing it or you forgot about it, I just wanted to do a reminder of that. Um, our April first meeting, that was the other piece. Um, and we can talk about this because we want to keep it short. We wanted to do another recognition. We, Deb and I were talking about um students um that are gonna be attending the Allstate Festival for um orchestra. We wanted to invite them, attention to that. Oh, I'm sorry, it was an encore.
I was about to ask, it was an insurance festival.
Maybe we can do, we'll we'll look at the agenda. If not, Matt will do the the next one afterwards, but we got, we want to keep that theme going.
You just stopped at Allstate, so I was like.
I know.
So for girl.
Yeah.
Is it just insurance?
We're gonna have to talk more about that meeting, too, um, because we also, I forgot one other item that um, you know, the same process we did at the high school. Um, back when Henry became the assistant principal after Deb was um identified as principal. Uh, we identified Claudine now as officially as principal, Shane Anderson, we need to get Shane Anderson. He's the intern still. So, yeah, so that's the board's job to.
Shannon's was the intern.
She is too. Shannon's position will be posted, but chains, we we did that, we just roll that into the twelve month, and then we post the other one. So we really need to got to get that locked in. So we'll we'll talk more about that agenda. Um, I mentioned the Board of Ed backdrop, um, we're in the process of developing that. Um, and uh, just quick, if anybody's interested, um, about tech and at at my conference that was at, um, was last weekend, back Saturday, late afternoon. We did uh an activity that was um A I generated, and um, this is cool. If anybody wants to take this, I'll send you a text. It's a bug. It's an electronic bug with a battery. Uh, yeah, we had to put it together, um, and to see who could create the best, but these are, these are right up your alley, obviously. Probably simple, so not giving it to you. Everyone wants to try it.
Is it like a listening bug or like a little crawly bug?
With a battery that you create and it moves around.
Well, I'll edit it. I want it, I want it.
So, I don't know, you had your hand up, I think.
No, 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 no.
Whoever, you guys can fight it out. I'll send one of you the text.
And it's a steel cage match.
All right, Kate, I'll send you a text and show you what it looks, I made mine, I'll show you what it looks like, and it moves around, so. Whether your grandkids with that, so. Yeah, but um, Annalise, I'm gonna be talking more about.
Well, we haven't had a chance, I think.
I know, so.
You're very excited.
Yeah, we got some different things, communication speakers, some stuff, got a lot of ideas, but anyway, that's uh, I'll stop talking. I know we've been along.
But what's the name of the conference you went to again?
Uh, insert the National Center for Educational Research and Technology. I've been going for eight years now, and uh, just for that superintendent's small class nation. Um. South Carolina. Yeah, so really, really cool. Yeah, really, really cool. So just a lot of great stuff. Amazing to sit with a superintendent that's got forty-two thousand kids in their districts, you know, yeah, to have conversations is really insane.
The population of East Slime water for.
They got a totally different dynamic.
Such a nice little bubble.
Annalise.
Yep. Annalise.
Um, so this weekend was busy with lots of things happening in East Slime. I had the opportunity to go and um enjoy the musical with my husband Friday night, and it was very funny. It was very funny. Um, and then Saturday morning was the ribbon cutting for the planetarium with Star System, um, well, that did well attended. High, high profile community members. Um, and so that's very exciting that we're getting that up and running. We are gonna try to pilot some of in district field trips uh of Flanders students. So that was like the next level of, um, you started with the community based events, and so this spring, um, we're working with Deb on a date and time to get some of our Flanders kiddos up there for a show. Um, so we'll test the waters with that and see how it goes and take it from there. Um, yeah. Speaking of STEM, we have um Lisa Vodril presented to our curriculum fellows at the elementary level last week. Um, she has been working, one of her projects as a fellow at the elementary level for science has been working on developing STEM challenges. So we'll have STEM Challenge Day at each of the elementary schools. This is, we've been trying to shine. STEM Challenge Day at each of the elementary schools, this is, we've been trying to shine the light on the different content areas, so this is our opportunity to shine the light on the STEM area, um, and so each grade level will get a kit of science supplies and two different activities to run through, um, one this year and then one to save for next year. Um, and all aligned to the NGSS standards, um, something that's hands on, something that kids can get excited on, it's a common assured experience across all of the grade levels, all three elementary levels, um, related to STEM. So she will be presenting in the upcoming months to each of the faculties on those activities, the teachers will actually, uh, engage in one of the activities to kind of, um, you know, see what it's like as a learner, uh, part of it is sort of, uh, you know, uh, experiencing those NGSS standards as teacher, um, to know what to expect from students, and so that's on the horizon. Um, it's really it, we're coming very close to making a final decision for our literacy program, yes, and we will be, um, planning to, um, articulate that and highlight that at our April second PD day for elementary teachers, so we're pulling them all together and we'll have a very exciting launch, so. I'm. Can see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Had my my parent teacher conference today where we discussed that at length.
Okay. Yes, it was a Herculean effort by many members of our community, so it's just, absolutely, yeah, we'll find a space and time to, um, to thank them, so.
Thanks, Annalise, Mariana.
Do you have anything, I met with principals, um, over the past week to just go over their current year budget and it was, I think it was helpful for me, I think it was helpful for them, so I'm probably gonna implement, um, like, meeting maybe every three or four months with them throughout the year, just to go over their current budget and, um, purchase orders, cause I do think it it helped both of us understand what, you know, what's happening in the school and what, you know, our needs are from the finance office, and that's it, and if anyone has any questions.
Thanks, Mariana, uh, that closes, um, administrative reports, women committee reports and policies until today, so I think cave update.
It's gonna be a podium standing update.
Oh, ah.
Been about tripping. All right, so it's, it's been eighteen years since I've been on the side of the podium. All right, good evening Superintendent Newton and members of the Eastline Board of Education, I am here tonight as an Associate Director of Cave to recognize the efforts of the Eastline Public Schools and present you with this award. You are receiving the Bonnie B. Carney Award for Excellence in Educational Communication, entries must meet all of the following criteria. First is the general criteria, which includes clarity of message, image and consistency. Second, the specific guidelines of readability, editing, graphics, type, format, presentation, design and value of expenditure. I'm very happy to present Eastline Public Schools with the award for excellence for educational communication for the Eastline High School Pathways Program. The Eastline Pathways Program has grown exponentially under the direction of Dave Fasulo with the support of the Superintendent and the Board of Education. These programs have positively impacted the educational experiences of the students of Eastline and has given them options for when they graduate and leave our schools. Cave has been honoring school districts with this award of excellence for educational communication since nineteen seventy-five. In twenty sixteen, the award was renamed in the honor of lifetime, longtime Cave staff member Bonnie B. Carney in recognition of her forty-seven years of the dedication to education focused on communications. With this award, Cave's goal is to identify and honor the hardworking people in school districts for their continuing effort to communicate effectively, so congratulations to Eastline. It's weird being on this side of the.
Yeah, you wanna. Would you see it right in the front, is it, pull that up? You'll share this with Kate, right? Gonna share this with Cave, yep.
Cave would like a picture of this.
All right. All right, there we go.
Why? I know, we, to be needed, Dave, we can't, somebody's gonna have to Photoshop Dave into it.
Thank you much, wonderful, that's nice.
No, then I'll even give you the last feature.
Still win a Cave Award.
A nice, it's like a nice one too.
Yeah. You still have that, uh, plastic.
No, no, you, you sound like.
Sorry, it's me.
Cold or something?
No.
Your voice. You're cheering on.
I gave it again, oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Thought you were like sick.
No, no, I'm good, I don't have any cave update.
Okay. So that was moving on to board comments and future agenda items.
I was able to go to the opening, the ribbon cutting on Saturday, and Annalise was actually the one holding one tie ribbon. It was really an amazing event and my only regret, I guess, is that, you know, we had, we had our, um, we had Holly there, we had Martha Mark there, our state senator, so, um, our state rep, and then people from the Board of Selectmen, but no news coverage. And there was a public doc, uh, declaration, you know, that Molly, that Holly and Martha read together, and I feel like there's so much bad news and like bad publicity that gets out there, and they had made really Herculean, Herculean, Herculean efforts to get um, press there to cover something that's really good that's going on, and I feel like there's so much good that's going on in our schools. And I know I've talked about this before, but I really wish that we could have those things more highlighted, um.
They didn't show up?
They didn't show up, and they didn't seem interested, and we sent them pictures and they're kind of like, they just didn't care, and I kind of feel like it's not drama. Well, and then, you know, it's the same, to the same, um, well, yeah, but then what happened in our neighboring town was what was on the front page of the paper on Saturday, you all know what I'm talking about, and you know, I think that's gonna affect us as well, and I think we need to maybe have a private conversation about that, not on record about, you know, what's going on and how that impacts our kids as learners down the road, if there's that huge turnover in staffs, I feel like there's good news and there's things that are of concern that are happening, and I think we need to be celebrating the good and trying to mediate or, um, minimize what's.
Two things I'd like to thank Jamie for getting us together on Saturday night, five of us, so much fun.
It was a, it was great, and I just want to make a suggestion that we might want to think about socializing again informally, cause it was.
We need to do it more often.
More often.
Where'd you guys go?
Spice Club.
It was just, we were, we were laughing, anyway, we all had a great time and I was very grateful, but we can bring this up again about socializing. I have a big deck off the back of my house and we can always, well, we can always meet on my deck. Big deck on the back, so anyway, and I'm putting that out there, uh, and number two, something that came up while we were there is, we have a lot of very successful young people that have graduated from Eastline. I know we spend a lot of time talking about how our kids that are now in the school system, what about if we think about bringing back students that are successful in other areas and just having them do a small presentation or just, I like, I think it would be added a little bit of depth, depth in a different way as Board of Ed to see what we pushed out the door and made successful and what they're doing. So, for example, was Vivek's son, who is an opera singer, which is absolutely amazing in my opinion. So I, that, your son was the one that really started that idea for me, so I'm thinking, let's have him come and sing for us, so again, we think.
He's not in Europe this summer. Without his dad.
That's a whole other story, but anyway, I'd like to say that we do, like your son, absolutely, he's in the Coast Guard Academy, I think it's awesome. And I think we, I would like to see that, besides seeing the little ones learn phonics. I'd love to think that that this is part of our work and we've helped make these shoulders, students, young adults, successful, so anyway, I'm done, I'm done. Look who we have first, his son or his son? All right, no, whatever, I won't put all child to Board of Ed day.
My kids have come to plenty of.
Maybe, I just, I just, you know, the Jake finish, finish the the comments, means, means, and I, I'm happy to ask my son to come and 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 think, I mean, again, it all depends on what the board wants. Uh, but I I I agree with Jill's idea that, you know, maybe we ask our our, uh, some of the alumni who 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 do certain things, have certain skills to come and maybe, you know, talk to us, you know, and and maybe we can learn from them, that how did we help them get to where they are? So, you know, I mean, the idea is is very, you know, we can start with somebody we know and I can, and I have a little bit of control over because I feel. But but the thing is, but the but the concept, I think, applies in general, it's not just just who I know or who Jill knows and and that, so. Just, just, just a thought, finishing.
We have a recent graduate, well, no, who is some type of television producer or or something like that in California. Now, he's not gonna come, I tried asking him, but I'm just saying, the week, I just think.
Come virtually. We could zoom.
Oh, my God, my age is showing, okay, yeah.
Cause, cause I think with the alumni, we have to.
Alumni, yeah.
We have to utilize technology, it's gonna be hard to get people to come, I mean, unless they're living within.
Yeah.
Fifty miles or something or forty.
Too literally close.
But, but if we can get them virtually to come in, that could be just as impactful.
And this is a way to re, maybe reach our alum.
Ties in with, yeah, uh, the outreach that we've already done, so, yeah. Yep.
Just a thought.
Work virtually.
So I'm gonna echo the dinner, we had a great, we had a great time at dinner, um, the only thing is that we have six, and what we just posted is a meeting. And it's fine to have a meeting in a public place, we just, if there's six more board of ed members, we just say we're having dinner at Spice Club and they can come and watch us eat. Maybe give the company, the restaurants and business too, but we did have, we had, and we actually didn't talk about anything Board of Education related, so. We had no Board of Education conversation, so it was a great.
Never thought about that, but you're.
Dinner where we just chatted about our lives and what's going on, so it was nice to get to know each other outside of the Board of Ed room, so it was really fun, so I, we should do it more often. Um, I saw the play this weekend too, and Olivia did, um, my guest spellers were Mr. and Mrs. Kidd. So it was very funny to see them interact with the kids in the audience and they actually like did some interacting like off script, which was really cool and really funny, um, and then my third thing is the school pool. So I had a youth family human services meeting Thursday night, um, and the student feedback is, is they want the feedback. They want to be able to use the pool again.
P E classes or?
Students in general during the day, they want to be able to get back in the pool, cause I guess they had a couple of days last week or sometime this month, they were back in it.
Yep.
And they loved it and they want to be able to do it more often.
Yeah, Jen's, um, shared the survey data with me today, I haven't had a chance to talk to Jeff about it.
So the student at our meeting shared with us that they.
That's the plan, try and, yep, expand and find a happy medium between, you know, blocking the community, you know, offer a period of time and letting the kids can then use it or work it in the schedule. Yeah.
I said I would say something and.
Yeah, thanks, yep.
You're welcome.
Yeah, share it with you.
I just, I thought tonight's group of, um, students that we were honoring was kind of cool, I echo your thoughts, Eric, with the diversity of what we had, you know, right, and I'm, I'm assuming Deb, there's stuff that the student body gets to see in terms of is there a news, does this stuff gets covered on the, like, the news show or in something?
Depending on how much they want to cover it.
Yeah.
It's all in the newsletter.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, I think that kind of stuff, if, you know, if we have more opportunities for it's to see their, their, um, peers and I don't know, I don't know how close those three groups were prior to tonight, but I'd like to kind of look in the glass like, oh, wow, I didn't, you know, I I would suspect that there might be like kids who didn't even know that some, their peers were doing other cool, different things, so, um, I I definitely think we need to continue to focus on the bright spots as well, showcase.
We're also trying to build up some of the, and particularly when you leave here today, if you walk down the hallway, the left of the, um, main office, there's a new trophy.
Trophy case.
To the margin van. There's all kinds of margin van stuff.
Yeah, that's.
Talking about trying to move some of these things around, here's some, some, some other groups.
Those. I, and I don't drive by this, other than to come to Board of Ed meetings, I don't drive this end of town that often, the, the sign at the end of the driveway, do we, do we put like, uh?
All those people were on.
Great, that's good.
Bet you drive by only get one or maybe.
Yeah, I got one name.
Yes, it could.
On social media.
Yeah, good, good.
Watch into the turn.
Second. Over in favor. Thanks, everyone. Bye.